Report on April 3rd meeting. Next meeting is Monday, April 1st at 1:00.
The Finance Committee met at 10:00 AM this morning, April 3rd. You have the finance reports in your packet. As of this date, in nine months, or seventy-five percent through the nineteen... 2019-2020 fiscal year, we have spent sixty-seven point eight percent of our budget at this time. Our finances are in good order.
Any questions for Carol? Thank you, Carol. Curriculum Coordinator, curriculum reports, your answer.
Great. So I just have a few points, because you certainly heard a lot from us at State of the Schools. Just wanted to let you know that our group of four fifth graders, Hayden Allen, Tyler Dusick, Lilly Kick, and Hunter Libby were invited to the Nationals. They've been working, and yesterday they were able to solve the national challenge after writing seventy different coding directions. They have been incredibly... They've persevered. It was a huge moment yesterday. Ms. Russell came running down to just share her excitement that they had finally had been able to maneuver the ping pong ball into the cup. So we are anxious to hear on April 29th the results of them submitting their code. We are submitting tomorrow to the Department of Education, a Twenty First Century Community Learning Center grant, so you've heard of it as the STAR program. So we're super hopeful that we might be able to return the after-school program here to the middle school. And one unique change from when we had the funding before, we are going to add third graders. So I think that'll be a really great opportunity, so we're very excited about that. And one other small twist is we're going to offer for the center or our program to stay a little later into the evening. It will end at 5:00 for any families that might want to pick up their child instead of having them ride the late bus. So we're hopeful that those two changes might really make the program even better. And just to note that the Curriculum Committee meeting's next Wednesday, April 10th, it will be our Substance Abuse meeting, so everyone's certainly invited. And if you don't know, we have author Ross Green, who wrote the text "Lost at School", was also recently in the Portland Press Herald for an article, is presenting here on Monday, April 8th at 6:00 PM. It's not sponsored by our school district. We are offering the space. It's sponsored by the Gear Parent Network, but we're really excited to have his expertise about working with struggling students.
I signed up. I did too.
Any questions for... Go ahead, go ahead.
From the 4:00 to 5:00 program, what have you established that's going to be happening between 4:00 and 5:00?
Well, so right now it would end at... Typically, most students were expecting we'll leave at 4:30 with the late bus. And so then we'll just probably... We haven't figured what will happen from 4:30 to 5:00 will depend on how many students we still have here. We're not anticipating that we'll have that money, but I think it would probably be just some additional homework time, maybe a little activity.
So it's going to be supervised?
Oh, definitely, yes. Yes, we're having our staff daily.
I mean, productive is homework.
So every day is going... So 2:30 to 4:30, so every day we'll start with a homework period of time for all students. They'll start with a free snack, then a homework period of time, and then we'll have a variety of different activities that they will be able to select from. There'll be something for visual and performing arts, something for STEM-type activities, so science, technology, engineering, and math. There'll also be nutrition activities, physical fitness activities. We'll also be offering some prevention programming, so there'll be a wide variety of things that they'll be able to select from. And in addition, which will be new, we didn't offer this before, sometimes there were students who weren't able to finish their homework in the homework time and then had to go to the activity. We wrote in that if a student chooses to stay in homework time during activity time, they'll be allowed to do that. If I choose, wow, I'm really behind, or I have a big project, and instead of going to a physical fitness activity today, I really want to finish my homework, they'll be able to do that. So we think that's a big improvement.
Well, my purpose in asking the question was if it was going to be something that was academically oriented, or if we were supplying taxpayer-funded babysitting until 5:00 o'clock?
No, we definitely want to make sure that it's worthwhile for the student.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Sue, can you say those names of the code?
Oh, sure, the fifth graders.
Just silver, for more publicity.
No, thank you, because it is really exciting, because we also had some older students who had a coding club. So our fifth graders were chosen who made the Nationals are Hayden Allen, Tyler Dusick, Lilly Kick, and Hunter Libby. So huge congratulations to them. Thank you, Mrs. Hoxsey.
Any other questions?
And actually, they're coming... Sorry, one more thing. They're coming to the Curriculum Committee in May to share what they've been doing with us, so...
We have to understand it, right?
We'll pretend we do.
We're going to mathematically figure it out.
Curriculum Committee report on March 13th meeting.
I think probably this past month has been my favorite for things that really showcase what our kids are doing. At the curriculum meeting, we met on March 13th, and the meeting began with a spectacular slide presentation by Greg Avro, who teaches our SOLE program at the middle school. This program incorporates science and social studies with community service to provide hands-on learning for our sixth, seventh, and mainly eighth grade students. Students are chosen by an application and interview process. Currently, eleven boys attend the program in the morning, and eight girls attend in the afternoon. Their experiences range from lessons in animal husbandry, mason stables, to organic farming at apple acres, to research on water quality with the Green Mountain Conservation Group. The students are also working with hand tools to create wood products. This was a very exciting view into one of the programs available to our students, and he does have an incredible slide presentation. I was just blown away, and I think everybody else in the committee was too. So then Sue unfortunately had to fall over. During the second half of our meeting, Suzanne Day presented a comprehensive look at the Empower tests that our students have been taking. The testing sessions will be spread out until April vacation. The committee reviewed past test questions for multiple grades. The challenges that our students face as they take the state-mandated test can range from keyboarding skills necessary to move an article to the question to be answered by the student, to actual wording of the question, so they're going back and forth. It was not an easy thing to do. It is easy to see how that one point in a test question answer can affect a student's overall score. Our students and teachers do well to navigate this system. We touched on pre-K enrollment. Thirteen have enrolled so far, and we discussed the teaching of cursive in fourth grade. We closed with the topic of teacher recruitment and retention. The district administration is providing opportunities for our new teachers to share their experiences. This dialogue helps us improve our system. School administrators will be intending a job fair that will be held at the University of Maine at Farmington. This will allow the district to share with prospective teachers the advantages and uniqueness of teaching in a small rural district. And we adjourned at 5:00. And the only question, if I may ask a question. The federal government had a loan forgiveness program that was... Congress set aside some incredible amount of money, like $700 million, and it was a two-year fund, and the percentage of people who actually got money was very minimal. And I guess is my question is, are we getting out to our people who have loans out? Because the kicker is, it's like you have to apply twice. So it's amazing. I'll let money sit there, and they've got these hoops that people have to jump through.
I'll answer a piece of that. We do fill out a loan forgiveness paperwork for several of our staff members. Everyone that should be taking advantage, I'm not sure Nancy, but we do fill out that paperwork on a fairly regular basis. So some of our folks are taking advantage, so...
Good.
That's another reason we're a great place to work, anybody listening. Great place to be, or just being in that loan forgiveness.
Yeah, good.
Any questions for Nancy? Okay, Lake Region Advisory Committee report on March 13th meeting.
That's me again.
Nancy's carrying the load today.
She's carrying the load, I like that.
But I'll tell you, both these meetings were great. The Advisory Committee for the Lake Region Vocational Center met on Friday, March 15th. We had thirty-four students attending in the morning and twenty-two in the afternoon. The committee started the meeting with Walt Ridlin, who is the Student Services Coordinator, and he reported on the Precision Manufacturing Day. And I'm going to say this very slowly, because I was... This is more stuff I was just so impressed with. Four companies, Hunter Dearborn, Contour 360, which is in Cornish, Pratt Whitney, and CNC Systems, gave presentations on their companies and answered student questions for both the morning and afternoon sessions at the school for the kids. These companies have vacancies in their workforce, and they're reaching out to the vocational schools for potential employees. One company pays students $15 an hour to work in the summer. They will pay for two years of community service, hire the students once they have graduated, and they have to work for the company for two years. Starting salaries with these companies average $54,000 a year, and most have overtime available, which brings the starting salary for these kids out of our folks' center at $62,000. At least eighty students are interested in visiting these companies and are trying to get them to set it up so they can go, and you can see why. Bath Iron Works, and this has already happened, this one, Bath Iron Works will also be meeting with the students. Bath Iron Works needs to hire 1,000 workers. These jobs will cover a wide range. It isn't like the others are mostly welding-type things. But Bath Iron Works, they need security, they need nursing, they need welding, and they need mechanics. So it's a much broader employer. Grandin is another company that comes to the campus looking for potential employees. Their meeting is called Play Day with Big Toys. They bring equipment to the school for the students to experience the field of working with big construction equipment. Needless to say, these three different examples show the importance of the work done at the vocational center. It was just a very impressive meeting. Then we went to the reality of curriculum. We reviewed the work being done to crosswalk the state standards in math and language arts to the courses being taught at the vocational center. The DOE has a partial list to which the vocational groups are adding further connections, and that's sort of requirement that they have to do, and Sue can explain it far better than I, so that to show that the students actually meet their requirements for language arts and math. Ten students met with representatives from EMBARC, and that's capital E, capital M, capital B, capital A, capital R, capital K. This program works with students who are going on to community college. This program provides $2,000 in scholarships, along with a mentor to follow the students through those two years. And Walter has a program, I don't know if he's been to the middle school yet, that he will be bringing to our middle school, and what it does is it tries to show the students all the potential vocational education, and he brings some pretty sophisticated things to try to get the kids to figure out what they are and get them a little bit excited. The final topic was the Early Education Program that will be offered next fall. This program will provide an in-depth look at early childhood development with a focus on matching the educational needs with a child's development. Parts of this program will be easily transferable should the student choose to pursue a four-year degree, and it's a program that would... It would be working children, I'm going to say probably birth through about five. It was just jam-packed with all kinds of things.
Impressive.
It was. It was a phenomenal meeting, just showing all the things.
Grandin thing was pretty good with all the big toys. Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you. I hadn't heard this speech before, okay? But I think that it is imperative that the school board, administration, and school faculty focus on getting these kids into these programs. I would love to be able to go to graduation and never hear the words again, "We'll be entering the workforce." I'd like to hear, "We'll be doing this with one of these programs," okay? That entering the workforce does not work for me, and I don't think we're doing these kids justice going through our educational system. This is something that we could and should be pushing to the ultimate degree.
Yeah, and I would bet that if you wanted to have Walt come, he would come and give you a much more succinct explanation of all that's offered there. Just the fact that these companies are literally coming to the kids and showing them what they have to offer is just so impressive. The kids don't know where to go, but they come to you. That's very impressive. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Nancy? Next meeting, Technology Committee meeting, Wellness Committee for a March 6th meeting.
Yep. I will summarize our meeting. And as you know, with the Wellness Committee, one of our goals is to review the wellness policy, and that is a requirement by the feds, that if you are receiving federal funding, then your district must have a wellness policy, and you must abide by it. So the other thing that we discovered was that our adult ed class, if you look at the brochure that they have been putting out, is full of wellness offerings, and that is a wonderful supplement for wellness for our community. We talked about that the community forum was held the day before on vaping, and that the TV2 recorded the forum, and we already received a report on that evening. If everything works out, we will begin the construction of the greenhouse at the high school over April vacation. And Samantha Wedgewood reported on her... The administrative review that was done by the state for... On our food service, and once the review is finalized, the board will be given a report. Our wellness policy highlights that we've been working on, this is a document to be given to the community and to parents to better summarize what the wellness policy means to the school district. It is just about ready to be distributed. We reviewed it one more time at our March 6th meeting. And Pick a Better Snack Program is being implemented in the pre-K classrooms, and they are really enjoying that. And of course, the snack they're picking is a healthy one. On Life Wellness Program, Becky, who's a parent member on our committee, spoke about that, and you did a presentation to the school board, didn't you, way back when? No? Maybe it was just the Wellness Committee?
I don't remember, Janice. I think it was just the Wellness Committee.
Can you just briefly explain what it is with the staff?
Sure. So it's a program through our insurance carrier here, Anthem, promotes wellness programs, and also allows employees to earn up to $250 in gift cards just by doing things. So there's these online challenges you can do that earn so many points, getting so many steps per day, eating healthy, and logging that information via their app gets you points, and it's just a nice benefit that you get those gift cards at the end of the year. So it's worked pretty well. I think we've had pretty decent participation in it, and it's a neat little program and a good way to earn some extra cash, so...
Thank you for coordinating that, too.
Of course.
That's called the On Life Wellness Program. And then the goals from last year, 2017, '18, were reviewed, and it was a consensus of the group that we are making progress to achieve our wellness goals. And next meeting to be announced.
Any questions, Judy? Thank you, Judy. Facilities report, Construction, Transportation, and Safety Committee report on March 13th meeting.
So I'll start, and I'm going to have Sue do new considerations after I present. Mine will be brief. I just want to say, positive news continues, so hearing a lot of positive things. So in facilities land, it was amazing Sue compiled all this data, but we have completed twenty-three projects off of our ten-year plan, done. So we have aggressively attacked our facilities, as well as our academics, as well as providing students opportunities, as well as our kids participating in things at the national level. So I just thought it was pretty impressive, the work of our Construction Committee and the support of the board, financial support of the board in our town, is what we've done with our facilities to go with strong academics. So that's one, just a proud glow. Two things, and one I'd like your advice on. One is just an update. You might have seen Diane's shopping guide for replace windows at Soccabie Valley Elementary School. We did spec out Marvin windows. Sue did a heck of a job putting a bid packet together with Johnny Cervantes, our Facilities Manager. We are worried, just to spoil construction here a little bit Wednesday morning, but we are worried that the windows will be expensive, and we'll have to take a look and see how many we can actually do, or if we need to look at a different window. But that's out there, and folks have some interest. The second thing that we have bids on is the one I'd like your advice on. I wish Diane Day was here. So we're looking to remove some trees at our high school by our alt building so we can plow and have snow not build up and leak in. There's a big pine tree by JRC that leans toward the power lines, maybe some pruning at our elementary school, and then some trees as you drive between our middle school and elementary so we can park for ball games. The reason I'm asking about it, I would never ask, I think it's going to be small dollars, relatively speaking. We have two bids in despite contacting nine local loggers. Two people have put a bid in. One is Day's logging, and one is Pike, and as you know, Diane sits on the board. I just want no appearance of conflict of interest, the board, or Landry, whatever. Gave it to the... To the Day's. The bids are sealed in Becky's office. We've had an honest process and tried to get nine bidders. Just wanted to know how you felt, should we open those two envelopes and Day's logging is the winning bid?
Should you open them, you said?
No, no. And if Day's wins, are we comfortable that Day's... We tried to get nine people to do it, two did.
Open them.
I don't have a problem. Anybody else have a problem with that? I mean, it's a bid.
Secret bid. You didn't know what your loan's going to be, it's committed.
Right. So I just wanted to make sure, just so no... Just as honest as can be, right out front, transparent. So if Day's wins, that was the process, and we'll award the bid to Day's. So that's it. I will turn it over to... Thank you so much for your advice. I'll turn it over to Sue.
Using funds from grants and fundraisers, we hope to add new pieces of playground equipment to the elementary school playground this summer. Want to say anything about that?
Sure. We did receive really exciting news that there were some districts that didn't spend all their pre-K dollars, so they kind of went back, and schools could write little mini-grants. So we produced one to apply for $20,000 to improve our playground, and it was accepted. So in addition to the funds that we had raised earlier and some district funds, I think we have a substantial amount of money now that we can look at to improve both... To improve the playground. I was telling Mrs. Malanson that one of the first-grade classrooms wrote opinion essays on what they thought our playground should have, and they were incredible. I'll share them with the Curriculum Committee, and I'll take them to construction, but some of them... And they wrote reasons why they wanted the things they wanted. So one person wrote that we should have a seesaw because it would encourage teamwork. One little person, one student put that we should have a playhouse because then they could use their imagination. It was just... I expected them to say things they wanted, and because they would be fun, and they really put a lot of time into them, they were really great. So I'm excited to collect the rest of the feedback from the school, and their teachers will turn them in to me right before vacation, and then we'll collect our Playground Committee to meet again and try and look through them, but I think we're going to be able to do some really incredible things, so we're excited. Thank you.
Well, the Construction Committee approved purchasing new tables from the maintenance budget for the elementary school, and the old ones will be sold. We're going to ask Mr. Miller to suggest a spot for relocation of the elementary school garden and give his people time to scope out sun and water and any perennials that they need to lift in order to move them. We talked about booster seats on buses for our youngest students. Policy EEA will have to be updated, and that's going to be done. The custom sideline seats and rack will be ordered for the high school, and eventually we'll do the same for the middle school. They say hawks on them, and they're padded, they're really very nice. An ad requesting bids... Oh, this is about the windows.
Yeah.
The committee continues to review the ten-year facilities plan. Some of the projects have been removed from the plan because we've decided not to proceed with them, and they've been... And there are others that have been moved to the maintenance budget or the twenty-three projects that we've completed in the first two years of the facilities plan. Our next meeting is going to be April 10th at 10:00 AM.
When you're talking about windows, replacement windows, only because I get... Every other day I get an email from Anderson Windows about some special replacement windows that are going on. I don't know how I get on these lists, but I am... Were they one of the companies that you dealt with?
So I probably couldn't know less about anything in the world, but I will tell you that we tried to use the ones at the high school, which I believe were Anderson, and the ones at the middle school are Marvin, and for some reason, the custom sizing, et cetera, Marvin became the best fit. And I know Sue worked at it more with Johnny.
According to Mr. Cervantes, Anderson does not make the size of the windows that we have at the elementary school, but no, he did look at that.
So there you go. So there's your more succinct answer than I was able to give.
Was Matthews Windows in the picture?
I don't know that specifically. I don't think so. I didn't hear that name.
Well, the reason I'm asking is they're made in Maine, they're exceptionally highly rated, they're sold at the lumber shop down the street.
I think what we're going to do, Bradley, is look at the bids when they come in and see where we're at, and if it's not cost-effective to replace with what we've specked out, we'll take a look at where we'll go with it.
Well, I'm just thinking that that's another one you might want to get for bid, because...
I'll check with Mr. Cervantes. I don't remember that being one of the ones that he talked to.
Walton Lumber carries them, and they're very highly rated, and they are a main product.
Thank you.
Maggie?
Also, I think it's World of Windows. We just said all our windows at Passant.
Matthews.
Matthews.
Domitory and had me building replaced.
Wow. Is that a brand of window, or is that the company that did it?
I don't know. I'm... It's the company, I believe. If you ask, if you call my husband, he can tell you, because he makes up the check. Not that we have the money to pay for it.
Thank you.
About the tables, I thought the problem was they're pretty stiff to open up and close up and whatnot, and has anybody had a chance to try oil to them?
Yes.
Mr. Cervantes confirmed that we have actually done welding, we've done multiple repairs, and he absolutely had tried that.
And we're also specifying that whoever buys the old tables, they're recommended for stationary setup, whereas our tables, we have to move and close up every single day, a couple times.
Any other questions for Sue? Okay. Next, Superintendent's report, action item, consideration to approve the 2019-2020 school calendar.
Oh, second.
By Judy, seconded by Jackie. Any discussion?
So I'll have the discussion. So if you look at the calendar in front of you, everybody has a color copy in front of them. I'll take you through month by month, not in gory detail, I promise. We won't go through all 175 days, but some of the notable changes. First off, I'd like to say we surveyed the entire staff this time around. A hundred and twenty-one folks responded to the survey, which was a very, very high participation rate. Tried to incorporate their feelings on what's best for kids. We talked to our district learning team yesterday. They felt great about this calendar. Some of the changes, if you recall, and actually, the board gave me some feedback last year. If you look in August, which is second one down on the left, W for Teacher Workshop, that's the opening day that, if you can believe it, it's going to come faster than you think, where the board comes, and there's breakfast, welcome back. The 27th will be a pre-K, comma K, comma four, comma nine day. In other words, each new group to their building, the board... Judy's nodding me, making me feel good. good. The Board last year gave that feedback, instead of bringing them all in at once, let's have the people that are new to their buildings start fresh on the first day. And then everybody comes on the 28th and 29th and then it's a traditional four-day Labor Day weekend and we're rolling. If you look, this is notable in October, that W, and Nancy would know this from being at our Lake Region meetings, I also met with Al, or Al Smith I should say, and Jay Robinson, the two superintendents of 61 and 72. We have to form our calendar together. Both have Freiburg Fair Friday as the workshop, which is October 4th. Usually the Columbus Day is Monday, the 7th and it becomes a four-day weekend this year for whatever reason. It doesn't work out, so there'll be a Friday workshop, a full week, and Columbus happens to be the following, the 14th. So, that's just of note.
That's because Columbus Day is the 12th.
Yeah, that's right. No, Columbus Day's the 14th, right?
No. The actual Columbus Day, the historic.
Oh, 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 I see. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, no, I know what you mean.
It gets close to that.
But usually, for whatever reason, it aligns that we have a four-day weekend.
It works better this year.
November, we've kept the same. I can tell you Sue Day is somewhat excited about our winter vacation being done on the 20th and not coming on the 23rd of December. There was some heavy-duty lobbying in Central Office for the 23rd being a vacation day. But that's consistent with the other two calendars, by the way. That's some teasing there. Martin Luther King Day, traditional, traditional. A March workshop, so you might wonder where the second workshop in August went. It went to exactly align with 61 and 72, so if you see the March 20th W Day with the asterisk and listening to the voices of the teachers, that asterisk workshop day, if we have more than five snow days, will be bumped to the end of the year and we will work diligently to have it be a professional development day. And you're going to say, geez, that's challenging after the last day, but we already are working on some plans to make that a beneficial day for our staff for learning. The next day that has an asterisk, we've always had the voucher day and the Board members that were in the Negotiation Committee will remember we have a voucher day. That's April 17th. That is also asterisked. That would become a day after the last day if we used more than five snow days. So, just looking to grab days when we get more than five snow days. Everything else is traditional. The 22nd is Field Day. Our little folks come up to the high school with our seniors and do great activities at the high school. That's May 22nd. And whatever the last day is, we release at 11:30. That's why that's green. And I wrote here on the right, so I'm in the box on the lower right-hand side, early releases at 1 o'clock, Teacher Workshop asterisk, and this is for folks watching. I know you can read. The March 20th workshop day and the April 17th workshop day will become regular school days if more than five storm days are utilized. If they become regular school days, the workshop days will be moved to the end of the school calendar. Then we have Vacation, Holiday, Early Release. This is one for the Board. Blizzard Bag Day, and I'll be happy to take your feedback. Blizzard Bag Day, the rules have changed a few times along the way. They're called anytime, anywhere learning days. So, at first, you couldn't replace one of your five snow days with a Blizzard Bag Day. Then it couldn't be one of your 175 days, couldn't be a Blizzard Bag Day. Now, you can pilot one, just one, anytime, anywhere learning day. The problems with the day, you have to have access and equity for all students, which is fine, provision of FAP, Free Appropriate Public Education for Special Need Students, students with disabilities. Here's the big one. You have to, and I'm certainly let Sue jump in and peg you in a minute financially or logistically, but you have to provide a free breakfast and lunch for qualifying students. So, let me just explain that. So, we'd have to know basically at 10:00 a.m. the day before, so our lunch staff could make meals for our kids to take home that day for the snow day. And I'm just gonna tell you privately, I don't love making a snow, weather it mean, right, wait a second, my grandfather used to mean, right? So, make a snow day call at 10:00 a.m. the day before a day, make 1,000 lunches and then it goes out to sea and turns sunny. I'm just a little worried about it. Plus, there's a financial, right? So, please, jump in.
So, I was informed through the head of the School Nutrition Program for the state at a business manager meeting that the meals will not be reimbursable, or at this point in time, there is not a plan for them to be reimbursable, which means we would have to send out meals and then not be able to claim those and get the reimbursement back for the free and reduced kids. So, that's a huge expense.
And the other thing I would say, you probably wouldn't just feed the free and reduced lunch, because you'd be identifying free and reduced students, so you'd probably have to send home 1,000 lunches at 11:00 a.m. the day before a potential snow day. So, it seems logistically challenging to actually implement anytime, anywhere learning day. I also have to have, and I say I because.
I've got a couple of questions.
I'm gonna, just let me finish my thing and I'll take anything you have. I have to sign off that I have School Board approval and staff, family, and community support. I have staff support, I mean, family and community, you know, I would assume we could try it. So, it just seems logistically challenging to implement one. So, I think the feeling was, as you look at your calendar team here, one day may be piloted, let's leave the door open and I can't, but I'm just not sure we'll be able to pull this thing off with these rules, but feel free.
All right. Well, John, you're first.
Two related questions.
Sure.
I notice on this calendar, we don't have any Saturdays marked for makeup days like we did this year, and I want to hear why we've decided to move away from that. And secondly, if the Blizzard Bag Days are any day, any time, do the kids really need to do the Blizzard Bag on the day of the blizzard? Or if they miss a Thursday, can we say, okay, you've got your Blizzard Bags over the weekend coming up, you have to do these assignments and then we could prepare the lunches on Friday?
Good question, which I don't have a good answer to. It's a good question. I think you'd probably have, my guess is you'd probably have some irritated people that they had to do a bunch of work over the weekend and then teachers would wind up working over the weekend because the teacher has to be available for support over the weekend, right? Because they have to have access to Free and Appropriate Public Education, probably access to their math teacher, say they're in high school doing the math project. That's the logistical challenge around it. I think conceptually, our Board loved it. I think we were talking about, hey, let's have four snow days and all the rest be Blizzard Bag, continuity of education, right? Where it's seamless, but you, A, you can, it's just logistically challenging with the rules I just read you. But that's a thought, certainly. And I want to answer your other questions. So, in our survey, and I'm gonna be a little tongue-in-cheek here, so bear with me. So, we had a question, you know, continuing days to the calendar in the summer, schedule one Saturday, schedule two Saturday, schedule three, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. By and large, so we put in days that people objected to the least. So, I still, I, we will still have 24 people that can't live with adding days to the end of the calendar. We still have 24 people that don't like moving the voucher day, the April day, but we would have had 59 people that can't live with a Saturday. So, we just tried to rate, sort, not that it's a popularity contest, but right, if employees are in the trenches and beyond things work. I thought the folks that did come on Saturday were pretty positive about it. Just FYI, we had about 75% attendance and I thought the people that were here thought it was a good event. There were obviously logistical concerns, but I thought it was fairly successful. I'm certain some people would disagree with me and that's fine. But the point is, it's the teasing that I do, there's no great answer to it because some people don't like going in the summer, some people don't like Saturdays, some people don't like adding an extra hour to the day, some people don't like moving a workshop or a voucher day. So, I don't know what the right answer is to have everybody be happy. So, we tried to do a path of least objection, I guess, in our planning.
Nancy, you're next.
I think the interesting thing about the Blizzard Bag concept is you don't even know if it's gonna work, period. And so, I'm looking at the workshop day and trying to figure out if there's some way that you can manipulate that day so that teachers are, as you plan your workshop day so the teachers are accessible like three times during that day or whatever. And on the Thursday, you can make your little bag watches and off they go.
Oh, you mean have a planned Blizzard Bag Day? That's the day.
So, that you, because, you know, it's, I know it's unfortunate. I know people don't like Saturdays. I know people don't, everybody has their place they want to be. But I think the unfortunate thing is if we can't figure out a way, and that's what the Blizzard Bag concept is all about, to make sure that these kids are actually involved in education in a meaningful way, the one hour at the end of the school day is not equivalent to anything. It just isn't after a student has been from whatever time to whatever time.
It would fit in with our staff, Nancy. It wasn't popular in our survey either.
Well, educationally speaking, it's not good. And I think the unfortunate part is we've got ourselves in the position where we have a minimal school year anyway. We have far less school than any other industrialized nation. But yet, we want our kids to compete with these. It's like, what are you doing to these kids? So, I think if we can figure out a way to make the Blizzard Bags work, then it probably would be the best educational step you could take.
Terms of continuity, I would think that's true.
So, it's like, if we can take one of those workshop days and figure out something, how it will blend into whatever concepts that you're working on so that if they do need to assist a student, it wouldn't, you know, be total, I'd much rather see the teacher disrupted than I would the student. And I don't mean that in a negative way, but I just think we have to find something that's going to work, so.
Brad, you're next.
Thank you. I read that as well and I looked at it and what I got from that was 77% of the teachers wanted to have the days at the end of the year additional school days. I don't know, but, you know, to work 180 days, whatever it is, if you take the first two.
Could live with this, support, strongly support. It totals about 78% for.
I get 77 and change, yes.
Adding days to the end, it's about 79% for moving the voucher and 89% for moving the March. So, we went March 1st, April 2nd, and add days to the end 3rd.
Well, I just think that whole school days are more productive than adding some time at the end and all. Just that doesn't work for me either. The other part of this is, is when I first put that thing up, is how much extra is it costing us for August 27th to do the first day for pre-K, four and nine?
What do you mean by that? How much extra is it costing us? I'm sorry.
I'm assuming that in order for all students to have 175 days of school, that those others that, all the other grades that aren't here can't be counted for.
That counts as one of the 175. I've checked with the Department of that.
Even all, even though all the other grades do not show up?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's, to my mind, that's not in the best interest of education either. So, we're bringing four grades, pre-K, K, we're bringing four grades and 12 grades get credit for coming to school.
We're running a school day, one of our 175, yes.
That's smoke and mirrors all over. I'm sorry, but I can't support that.
But there was a lot of feedback last year.
From?
From a lot of parents that, and there were some Board members also.
Slash some Board members, yeah.
That it was, it was much more advantageous to the young kids going to school for the first time in a new building.
I wholly endorse that. I agree with that 100%.
Okay. So, what would you do as far as that goes?
That's an extra, so it would be 176 days.
I assume we'd have some negotiating to do if you added a day to the calendar.
Okay. So, okay, so that's the negotiating to do. Are those teachers who in the eight grades are not showing up, are they giving up a day's bag?
No.
Well, we need some negotiating to do then. I can play that back. This is not in the best interest of education, you know. If you're gonna get to negotiate, if they gotta go an extra day for four grades, but you don't have to for the eight grades that aren't showing up, that just doesn't play well with me. I'm sorry.
Maggie?
No?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Bradley, they already have Step Up Day, right?
In June? Are we still doing Step Up Day in June?
No. Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to, before they go up to the next building?
To go with Bradley's, they already go. And kindergarten comes when they register. Don't they come on the bus and all that business?
They do not transport. The first time they ride the bus is on the first day of school.
Okay, but we do for the other grades, they have Step Up Day. So, they don't need to come.
So, here's the other thing I'll say, I have said to every, the Board ultimately sets the calendar. If you want to go along with, if you want to go along with that viewpoint, we have pre-K through 12 starting on the 27th. That's fine. I will present that back, that we've changed to pre-Ks. Everybody's coming on the 27th. That's okay with me.
I don't think, Cal, why, does State say we have to say how many storm days we're having or why can't we just not have this five storm days? Just, you know, in June, on June 17th or whatever, then you've done 175 days. That will be our closing day.
You mean just keep extending storm days? Like have eight, nine, 10 storm days? Is that what you mean?
Well, if you have eight or nine, or you might have two.
Right. So, I was just going by the, move the workshop is the first choice to get past five. Nobody says you have to have five. You could have 25 storm days, I guess. Well, I think probably there's a rule, June 30th is it?
I never knew why we had to have a number that says how many storm days. Why don't we just, if you use five, then we add five?
That was the viewpoint of some of our staff members as well, but not the majority.
Well, we didn't get in.
No, you can overrule, I said to the, you can put any, you can take this, throw it out, come back in May and give me a calendar and I will pass it on to the staff. That is, your role is the School Board.
And the Blizzard Bag, I, what happens to, so I guess the parents all have to find babysitters.
It's a storm day anyway. It's no school.
Right. That's true. First I envisioned when I heard about it, I thought some bus was gonna travel around delivering these lunches.
That might not be super cost-effective.
No. Who is thinking about this? And I don't understand how this, so this child brings, a little kid brings home a bag lunch, Blizzard Bag lunch. Who's to say he doesn't sit down and eat it that night? And then what does he do the next day?
That's when the bus comes around.
Well, that's when the bus comes. Yes, I am. Thank you.
So, on March 16th, you said we had 75% attendance of students.
Yes, yes, of students.
What was the, what was the percentage of attendance of staff?
I don't know, but I think it was definitely better than 75. I don't have the exact percentage, but I don't, as I recall, I don't think we had a lot of people calling.
But we had, we had some.
I would say, I can't think, I don't have that percentage.
Okay.
But I would say that people did not have use Saturday, I can tell you that.
Nancy?
I just want to make sure that you understand, I do think that day is important, but I also think it's important that as minimal as it is, don't make it any less than 175, that every student in this district goes to school. It should not be any lower than that, no matter what configuration we do. There has to be a line and you should not, to me, it's, we should be doing 183 for the students, but we're not, and I'm not going there. I just think it's a commitment to the students that you are providing them all that they need. So, how it works in here, I think, needs a little work, but I think what you have here is fine.
There's one clear, you have some movement to make August 27th, pre-K through 12, which is fine and you're right to do so. So, that's fine.
I'm fine with that.
That's the way you get to 175.
No, it isn't. I think that it's creativity and I think it's a matter of looking at, can you manipulate the Blizzard Bags and a workshop day? Can you figure out some way to make that work? And I think the answer's yes, but it's a matter of looking at, you know, ending on a Monday is always challenging as it is. So, whether you want June 9th or not, I don't know, but I understand the need for having that first student day. But I also think we have a. that first student day, but I also think we have a responsibility to make sure each student literally does have 175 days.
Brad, you're next.
I understand the importance, and I endorse it, I think it should happen. I guess I would like to know, if we do that, and then 175 days, what the additional cost might be. I realize there's busing, this, extra teachers, some support personnel, and lunch. I do think it's important. I guess the part that disappoints me is, did no one, I don't believe you put this all together yourself, I think this was a collaborative effort, did no one anticipate that this might come up, that this might be a question?
There was conversation around whether we go pre-K through 8 again, or it did come up about pre-K through 12, then there were advocates. In fact, folks have to work with the kids, geez, I think eighth graders should be in the high school by themselves for a day, and it wasn't the people that you would consider getting a day off advocating that, you know. Sometimes, I think our kindergarten teachers saying, geez, we'd like our kindergarteners for a day, so all of these things did get bad around, and this was the best recommendation of the team that came up with it.
I think this is important, but I also think that everybody, you know, these guys get 176 days, the rest of them get 175, because it is the minimum of what's going on in the whole country. And we're not doing people any favors by shortening the school year.
I don't have a good answer to it, I mean, I think there's some work to do, we have to approve it.
Sounds to me like we should be doing everybody on starting day.
That's the record, that's the recommendation.
Is that the recommendation of the board, that we start everybody on the same day?
No.
No, Paul.
No, my recommendation.
That's what Bradley is saying.
No, no.
No, it's not.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that it's important to do this with those four grades, but I don't think that the other grade should go 174 days. I'm, and that's why I asked what it would cost us to do that day, run the buses, hire the teachers and support staff that is, are needed to do pre-K, the incoming class in each of those schools, and to see if it's something that's palatable for the board and worthwhile for the tax dollar.
I don't know, I've never had the experience, I don't know if we could pull off all the negotiation prior to the May meeting where we adopt a calendar, I'm just being honest, I don't know. Let's call them both negotiating teams together prior to our May board meeting.
Well, first of all, I think, I think the operative question would be, does it need to be nego, I realize that legally, it does have to be, unless the other side decides, you know, let's have the teachers involved, and the teacher leadership come in and make a quick proposal, and you can do a memorandum of understanding, and pull something off that way. I don't mean to say that, just pull something off, just not the way I want that to sound, but to make it work that way.
The Blizzard Bag idea, since what we're trying to get is everybody to get 175 days, but at the same time, we also want to accommodate new students in each school building, to have the building to themselves, to get acclimated to it. Is there a way to utilize some sort of, maybe not on the first day, but something like the Blizzard Bag, a remote learning tool, to obviate the need for everybody to come in for an extra day who wasn't there on the first day, but they can still accomplish some sort of meaningful work? So we don't have the cost and negotiation problems of effectively adding a day that the school is open, even if it's staggered such that the first day would be one set of teachers, and the last day would be a different set of teachers and students. Is there a way to utilize the technology we have, where everybody's got a laptop, that, or if they don't have a laptop, they can complete some sort of written work, and be able to access, like on a Blizzard, the instructional supports that they need through web chat or web content that the teachers have put together around that package of materials?
Not sure. I think, I think my recommendation would be, I think there are two courses of action, I think it's as is, or the 20, in the timeframe we have, or it becomes pre-K through 12 on the 27th. I don't think we have a lot of time to work out these kinds of details, I think the choice is yours, and I'll, whatever it is, you're the board, decide what happens, but I think calendar as is, that was my recommended calendar, it's fine if, if we want to change it, and I get the reasons why, I think the amended would be first student day is on the 27th, pre-K through 12, and everybody comes, and in the timeframe we have, I mean, I think if we had, this had come up October, I would say differently, but I think those are the two choices in front of us.
Maggie?
So, don't they have a picnic for the kindergarten, and all the parents come, and all this?
The elementary school, for the last three-ish years at least, has welcomed families the evening before school started.
Right, and do they come in the school and look around and so forth?
Yes.
So the child has been probably where they're going to be, and pre-K, well, they would be, those pre-K students come from when you kindergarten register, right?
They have that same opportunity. What we heard from people who were concerned about the, all the elementary students all at once, is just the hecticness of the bus time. So all students are just getting off the bus at the same time, and when it's just pre-K and K, then all staff are there greeting them, and kids get really individual attention. Hi, we're so happy you're here, here's your classroom, they take them there. It's really, the largest concern I heard from people is just that opening morning time when students arrive. We figured out the lunch part, we had a separate lunch for kindergarteners on the first day last year when we did pre-K through nine. We had, we went, they went out to the bus early, all by themselves, but it was that opening time when the buses arrived, and all pre-K through four students got off the bus, that we just, we didn't have a good answer to giving them the individual attention that we felt like we had given them before, if that makes sense.
Well, do ed techs stand on that, on the first day?
Yes.
First school day?
Yes.
So they, couldn't they be utilized?
We did have all adults, yeah, it was just that there's all these students and lots of new faces, I know you have.
And then getting them on the right bus at night is another thing. And, you know, it takes two or three days, and then-
Yes, Stephanie's been great working with her bus drivers, so the first week, and then even into the second week, we take the pre-K and kindergarten students out to the bus early, and the bus drivers let them all on first.
And as far as the grade four and nine, they, through Step Up Day, they've gone to their class, right? In, in this year.
That's true.
Judy?
Carl, the state recognizes a half day as a full day?
Say what you mean one more time, Judy.
The state recognizes a half day as equivalent to a full day.
So eight to 11:30, you mean?
Yeah, what about going the other way? 12 to-
So 11 to, 11 to 2:30, a three and a half hour swath of school would get you a school day, yes.
Okay, so what do you think about bringing in the first time grades in the morning for a half day, and bringing in the rest of the school for the rest of the half of the day, and when the new kids come in that are not the new students in the school, they get off the bus, and the kids that were here in the morning, the bus drivers take them home, I know it falls on the bus, but anyway, that way, everybody gets 175 days. Is that doable, if it's legal, according to the state? It's a half a day, so the new kids would only be here half a day instead of a full day.
Eight to 11:30, and then the, everybody else is 11 and 2:30.
Just something to think about.
Yeah, I think it works, I think they're both getting a school day in. Trying to think of the busing, so eight to 11:30, so if you picked up everybody, they could do their run, pick up everybody else, bring them here for 11, you'd have a half hour overlap of kids, right? Because the comma, pre-K, comma, K, et cetera, would be here till 11:30, they'd be here a half hour with the bigger kids who would arrive at 11.
You'd have two lunch hours, too.
Yeah, they'd be scheduling wise, it'd be certainly-
Well, no, the kids, the kids coming to, well, I was gonna say, the kids coming to school would have had lunch at home or something, then we have the free and reduced kids. Anyway, just something that I thought of.
Nancy, you're next.
Hi, so I'm looking at, under workshops, where you are willing to eliminate, it becomes a regular school day, which means whatever the workshop was intended to be, evidently just, just goes. So I'm wondering if, I'm gonna go back to the Blizzard Bags, in October, trying it, that it counts as a regular day. I'd, I'd accept this as written, but I want it to include the 175, I want some way for administration to figure out how that's going to be 175. I think the Blizzard Bags would do it, and I think if Judy's legal, it's a possibility, but you're still not giving somebody a full day. It's so minimalistic, that's the part that bothers me. You just are not giving them the barest minimum of a school year, so.
Can I just follow up on that? I'm wondering how much gets done the first day anyway academically, because it's really basically home, it's paperwork and stuff, but anyway, that's just my point as a teacher.
Brad?
I don't know.
I'm not in favor of Judy's idea, however, if it were to work, it would seem to me that the only additional cost would be one bus run, because the buses pick up the little kids in the morning, bring them to school. They go pick up the other grades and bring them to school, they're getting off, the little kids are getting on, and there's an extra run in the afternoon, so it's a minimal cost that way.
Yeah.
Because the bus runs are all the same, correct? They pick up the little ones and the big ones all at once, right?
Yeah, so you'd have the morning afternoon run, you'd have the one additional run midday.
Right.
Yeah, I would agree, I think it, and then, so-
Again, educationally, I'm not in favor of it, but if you did it, that would, that would-
From chapter 125, an instructional day is a minimum of three hours, certainly three and a half hours meets the requirement of three hours, it's more than three hours, it's beyond the requirement.
Does that involve negotiation with the union, pull that one off?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're next.
How many years have we been doing it without doing the, for the stagger, I guess, for the older ones coming? How many years have we missed the 175 for everybody?
Never. What do you mean, so say, oh, what do you mean?
Well, we've done the delay, yes.
We've done the comma, pre-K, comma, every year except last year, and the board, I felt like, it gave me a hard time, that's not the right way to put it, but there were some board members that were concerned that we brought pre-K through nine all at once last year.
Right.
So I'm trying to think, every other year I've done this, six years, maybe before that? I'd have to look back at old calendars, Diane, but I always remember doing this, pre-K, comma, K, comma, four, et cetera.
Yep, to go through.
I can't speak for sure, but I would say probably at least the six years I've done it.
It would have been quite a few years, but just to see, I mean, to go back, I'm not saying that nothing's accomplished on the first day of school, but it's more housekeeping, so to say. I think more is productive on that end than adding, when we talk snow days and adding on another day at the end, I mean, when we get in June, it's pretty non-productive and more or less fun time for the kids. I mean, I think pretty much, from a parent perspective, teachers as well as students shut down from like June on to the end, you know, they're, that's why I think adding stuff on to the end of the school year is pretty much non-beneficial in the sense of academic wise, but to go the full, you know, to bring everybody on, we're a small district, you know, to bring everyone on, if there are ways to get around it, to educate the little ones and, and kind of have extra help on, for those, I know it's been brought up before, that it's an issue with some teachers getting the extra day in and other teachers not, so I guess my thought is to bring them all in all at once-
On the first day?
On the first day, and have the, the help in extra early bus time, and, and maybe take the little ones out early, because that seems to be the issue, is the bus, busing, to organize that.